Good evening, the Finance and Law Subcommittee shall come to order. Roll call, Mrs. Shavz.
Present.
Greg DeMello, present. Steve Yer, absent. First up, we have disposal of surplus equipment requests. A school shed. I'll turn it over to Mrs. Monahan.
Thank you, Dr. DeMello. As you can see from the disposal of surplus materials, it is a shed that is located at Hopewell School. It was purchased in 2010. The estimated value of the poor condition of this shed is about $150. From here, if, of course, the committee goes ahead and says that we will be able to deem the surplus, we'll put this on GOV deals to see if we will have any buyers for the shed.
Excellent, thank you.
Can I make a motion to put this on file, approve it and put it on file?
I guess the proper motion should be to move a motion to move it to the surplus.
Okay, to move it to the surplus.
Disposable items.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, ayes have it. Thank you. Next up, we have bills payable FY '25 in the amount of $559,939.66. Wishes of the committee.
I have some questions.
Absolutely, Mrs. Shavz.
Okay. Page one, the first thing for the $13,500 for athletic audio.
It is a subscription for their audio contracted services that they have each year.
Okay, subscription and the contract.
This is the program that the coaches use to review film in the game room in anticipation when they're prepping for the upcoming game.
Okay. Excellent. I noticed tech maintenance. There is seven different vendors for tech maintenance for about $96,000. So are these like the laptops the kids are using or are these computers that the teachers are using and are they getting old and should we look at new ones? Like page one, we have, I mean, number one, page three has ClassLink.
So ClassLink is a, it's a subscription?
So that's a subscription.
Yes, renewal for each one of, depending upon if it's for students, if it's for staff, but that is another subscription renewal. So you'll see a lot of that right now.
So some of these are probably subscriptions.
Correct.
Because there's New Era, Incident IQ, GM Software.
Their ticketing software system is the Incident IQ. So a lot of these happen at this time of year because of the yearly renewals.
Okay, then that makes sense. Okay. The other thing that I noticed, there are four different requests for PD on this one, resulting in about $110,000. And comparing it to last month, we had about $131,000 of PD. Is that, I mean, I noticed that there's a lot of PD requests are, what is the norm that we normally spend in a given year for PD?
Could you refer to your specific one if you don't mind?
Yeah, so on page three, there is $30,000.
So that there is a curriculum three-day training for that $30,000. So sometimes you'll see at the last, the end of the year, we'll have staff going ahead and doing those last few days, like right after school ends.
Yes, yeah.
That's the other, that's kind of the big PDs that we'll have each year. So that's one of them.
That's one of them.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and I know on page six.
And as Superintendent Cabral is saying, that one is grant-funded as well.
That's what I was going to ask. I was going to ask if at some point we could get a breakdown of the PD and how much is actually paid by grants.
If you always look, if I can show you there.
Yeah.
If you look at the first two numbers.
Yeah.
That's how you'll know. Oh, one is the current year, is a current school year budget, and then you'll see the 21s are usually outs, it's considered to be more of a, to be grant.
So anything with 21 is grant-funded. Okay.
If I may, Mrs. Shavz, on a point of clarification, you said like the last three days of school, but this is coming up in FY '25. Is this an FY '25 or FY '24 expense?
This, well, it's an FY '25, and I apologize, you're right. This is going to be a three-day training and I'm not, I don't have it listed here which day, and you are correct, it is an FY '25. So it probably happened in July.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay. On page 11, we have Summit for $34,000. Summit Holdings.
Yes, that is the WEDA professional development subscription for FY '25. Correct.
And page 12, we have Walker.
That's also professional development that has been happening.
Okay. And that is a grant.
Correct.
Actually, so that one is a grant that's there. Okay. Okay. That was my questions. Thank you.
Okay. If I may, we haven't even made a motion yet, but we're still on the discussion here, I guess. So on page four, the $9,500 for maintenance of building contractual services, Pilar, is that still the Bennett School or is that something else?
No, that is, that one, he's done various things, but that one there is power washing for the exterior of Taunton High School to prepare for the mural that's going to be painted.
Power washing, okay, great, thank you. Okay, wishes of the committee, Mrs. Shavz.
I make a motion to approve the bills payable for $559,939.66.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, ayes have it. And that concludes the subcommittee report. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn be in order.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, ayes have it. Thank you.
Good evening, welcome everyone. I call the meeting to order. If you could please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Mr. Enos will lead the indication.
Before we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask for your blessings on all the deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be service to our community, to the young people entrusted in our care.
Amen. Thank you. Roll call, please, Mr. Enos.
Mr. Laura.
Present.
Ms. Santos.
Present.
Dr. DeMello.
Present.
Present.
Ms. Shavz.
Present.
Madam Mayor.
Present.
Ms. Enos, present.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of July 17th, 2024.
Motion to approve as read and date of July 17th.
Second. Motion and second to approve, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Now we have the Student Advisory Committee report, and Isaiah Wendell is good enough to be here in the summer with us. Thank you, Isaiah.
Thank you. As Mayor O'Connell said, my name is Isaiah Wendell, and I am part of the Taunton High School Student Advisory Committee. As we gear up for the 2024-2025 school year, here's a look at the developments of the summer and what we look, and what we look for as the, as we begin the school year. Summer school completion. We are thrilled to announce that 137 students successfully completed summer school this year. Congratulations to all the hard-working students who dedicated their time and effort to their studies. New furniture. We're excited to announce that both the main lobby and the library will have new furniture at the beginning of September. This will create a more comfortable and inviting environment for all staff and students. Patio renovations. The patio outside the Tiger Cafe is still undergoing renovations, and I saw it the other day and it looks great so far. I'm excited to see it finished and see everyone enjoying the new space. Fitness center and weight room. Our campus remains active throughout the summer with students continuously using the fitness center and weight room. It is great to see many students on the campus and staying fit and healthy during the summer break. Meet and greet with Dr. Harrison. Taunton High School principal will be holding a meet and greet for parents and guardians in the Taunton High School cafeteria on August 22nd from 8:00 a.m. to 8:45, and on August 26th from 6:30 p.m. to 7:30. This is a fantastic opportunity to connect with our principal and discuss the upcoming school year. Eighth grade orientation. Eighth grader, we are excited to welcome our upcoming eighth graders with a student orientation on August 23rd from 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. This year, the orientation will be run by upperclassmen, both seniors and juniors, who have been trained through our new program called Link Crew. Additionally, there will be an orientation for parents and guardians of our eighth graders on August 22nd from 6:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Student schedules. Student schedules are in the process of being finalized and are expected to be released the week of August 19th. They will be available for viewing on Schoolbrains or Parent Portal. We look forward to seeing everyone soon and starting the new school year on a high note. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Isaiah. Thank you for keeping us updated. It's good to hear that students are still connected throughout the summer, and if there are no comments, we will just move on to item D, which is public input. Is there any public input this evening? No public input. Item E is school choice and charter updates.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Superintendent? As has become customary, I have Assistant Superintendent Brenda Monahan and Director of Student Services Stephanie Hoy here to provide you with an update or our annual presentation on school choice and charter. So I think you'll learn that we have made some strides by implementing some new programs that the school committee has approved, and we now have a tool that Mrs. Monahan will discuss towards the end of the presentation where we can more accurately monitor the fiscal impact that school choice and charter has on the Taunton Public Schools. But without further ado, I'll turn things over to Stephanie and Brenda. Thank you for being with us this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, and as Superintendent Cabral stated, we're here to discuss your annual school choice and charter update. So just starting off with some brief facts about school choice, I won't bore you by reading it, but I'll highlight some of the areas. So school choice is, gives family options, gives family options across the state to basically have their child attend a school outside their town or their city. So this past year, 185 districts across the state were considered receiving school choice districts. 317 were sending districts, so 300 school, 317 school districts sent students to receiving districts. Overall, little over 17,000 students participated in the school choice program. Out of the 17,000, 4,000 participated by attending a virtual Commonwealth Virtual School. So the Commonwealth has two virtual schools. They have TECA and they have Greater Commonwealth Virtual School. So 4,000 students across the state participated in attending those two virtual schools. So this basically demonstrates the trend, and this is something you've all seen before, for those of you who've seen this presentation in the past. It comes right from the DESI website, and it just demonstrates the trend over the years and it highlights time. So you will see receiving and sending trends. This particular slide also highlights all the districts in our area that basically accept school choice. Assistant Superintendent Monahan will go into the finances for you a little bit on this slide. You'll see that Attleboro no longer accepts school choice, but all students that were in Attleboro prior to that are grandfathered in. So they still have students of ours, or, and of course, we can receive students from Attleboro, but all students that were school choice before they stopped the school choice process have been grandfathered in.
So also on this slide, you will see the last two columns where you will see the Chapter 70 funding increase from FY '23 to FY '24. So that's that amount of money that, remember how we always get our monies each year from the state? Usually, as you will see, the bigger districts will have, or the districts that have more of a need, will have a higher increase in Chapter 70 funding. So as you will see there with Taunton, we had over $10 million increase. And then a smaller district like a Norton or another smaller district, Dartmouth as well, you'll see they only increased Dartmouth of $198,000 and then Norton of $131,000. So where do they make their money? They make their money by school choice, and that's that last column. So how much money these districts received through school choice? Taunton and FY '24, we've received over $600,000 in school choice revenue. And then looking at those last, those two smaller districts that I referred to before, Dartmouth received $742,000. And again, look how much of a difference that is with their Chapter 70 increase to their, to their school choice. That is why a smaller district where you have a higher tax revenue, wealth income as well, they will receive less money, that $60 per student, in difference than what we would be in an urban district. Again, smaller district will make more of their money through school choice than Chapter 70.
And this slide just gives you kind of a rough idea, and it also comes right from the department, our DESI website, so it's as accurate as of March 1st, because that was the last time that we actually sent this data to the state. We just recently certified, but the state doesn't have those actual numbers from the summer. So this gives you a glimpse of the receiving and sending tuition from not only our district but neighboring town.
So school choice revenue, and I'm hoping that this, the color codes will help you a little bit, and then the example. So right now in front of you, you'll see that students who choose, who choose school choice out of the district do count towards the Chapter 70 foundational budget. So again, students who school choice out of the district do count towards our Chapter 70 budget. Students who school choice into the district, a student coming from Berkeley, from Deighton Rehoboth, do not count towards the Chapter 70 foundational budget. They give us our school choice money. But again, I'm hoping the next few slides will help. Sending districts retain roughly two-thirds of the per pupil Chapter 70 funds, and you'll see that again in the next slide. Here's an example, and this is not going, this is going to be a fictitious school, Bayside High. So the first one, again, please notice the color codes, and I'm hoping the reds, you'll see how the numbers are and what it means. So if we're saying the number of leaving students times tuition, so the average tuition of school choice is at about $5,900, because of course, remember, depending upon the level of services a student receives, it will go ahead and increase or be at that round about 5,000. So we average it about 5,900. So again, we'll say about 100 students are leaving Bayside High, and times that about 5,900, that calculates to be $590,000 in sending tuition. So the number of students receiving, coming to Bayside High, is about an average of 5,900. So those 50 students times 5,900 is $295,000. So again, now let's look at it a little differently. So the number of students, leaving students, times the Chapter 70 per pupil for Taunton, for Bayside, excuse me, 16,272, minus the sending tuition. So remember, we get money from the student for Chapter 70, but we also have to minus the tuition, the sending tuition. So what does that mean? Retained Chapter 70. So if we'd had that 100, that 100 students, those top ones there, the 100 students times the average Chapter 70, which is 16,272, minus that tuition that we have to pay to send those students out of Bayside High, that will equal 1.0, a little over $1 million. So in other words, if you take that retained Chapter 70, that number, the over that $1 million, plus the school choice income, those students coming into Bayside, that 295,000, Bayside District will go ahead and get for school choice revenue, 1.3 million. So let's take that, that example and put it into Taunton Public Schools' numbers. So the number of leaving students at Taunton Public Schools, we have about 268 students leaving Taunton choosing other districts. So you take that and take that by 5,900. So that sending money going to other districts is 1.9 million. So then the number of receiving students, numbers coming to Taunton from other districts, times that average tuition of 5,900, we will take for school choice revenue or income is $619,000. So then you take the number of leaving students, again, the students choosing out, times that Chapter 70, because remember, even though the students are leaving, we still get some monies from them, that foundational budget, 16,272, minus the sending tuition. Again, that sending tuition, the money that we're paying out for kids to go out, equals that retained Chapter 70. So we're making some money. So we're taking that. So 268 students that are leaving, times 16,000, times 16,272, that foundational budget, minus the 1.9 million of sending tuition, that means we are saving or retained Chapter 70 money of 2.5 million. So that means for revenue, we retained money for Chapter 70, again, the amount of money that we have, then the school choice income for those students coming in choosing Taunton. You take those two numbers, we have a combined school choice revenue of over 3.1, just about 3.1 million.
So you may wonder where our students are going, and this will give you a kind of a rough idea of where our students do go coming from Taunton, those residents in Taunton. You'll notice that there are a couple of communities who have the bulk of our students. I'll speak to one of the communities a little bit later in my presentation. I do want to highlight one positive area that I'll also speak to a little bit later, but since all of you have approved the virtual school in Taunton, what we've noticed is a decline in how many students are actually leaving us to go virtual. So kudos to Principal Rodriguez and all of you for having that happen, because that is one area that we have definitely seen some strides in. So again, I'll speak to some of the communities a little bit later in the slide, but this will give you a little bit of a snapshot to where our students are going. And our next slide is where they're coming from. So again, a bit of a snapshot of where they are coming from. These are the towns and the area cities that we are receiving school choice applications for, and this is a rough estimate of where students are coming from. So the next, we want to discuss charter schools. Charter schools are independent public schools that are given a five-year charter by the state. And later in our presentation, Assistant Superintendent Monahan will discuss a little bit about what that finance looks like. Here are the area charter schools that our students are going to, that will give you a breakdown. It also gives you the past couple of years, so that you can actually compare.
So again, let's talk about charter school revenue. So the FY '24 charter tuition reimbursements, and that's on our cherry sheets, the mass cherry sheets where we get that, that figure. And please know that charter school reimbursement's not always just coming out all at once. A charter school reimbursement is over a period of time in percentages. So 143 students chose to go to charter schools, Taunton students. So again, how does this happen? So we're going to try to go ahead, and as Superintendent Cabral did mention earlier, about some type of a tool to utilize. So here, what we're trying to say is we're closing the gap, and we're going to use some of the numbers that were previously presented. So the assessments, three things for the assessments. School choice sending tuition, so we're sending tuition of 1.9 million. Charter school sending tuition, 2.4 million. So when you do that subtotal, A plus B equals C, okay? So again, that is going to be about, those two numbers equal about 4.3 million. So then we take that revenue. The revenue that we're getting is that retained Chapter 70 funding, remember, for the money that we keep when kids are leaving the district. That's about 2.5 million. The income of school choice tuition for those students choosing to come to Taunton, it's about $620,000. The tuition chapter, the charter school reimbursement that I had stated previously is about $340,000. Those three figures will equal about 3.4 million. So I'm hoping you can understand. Now we're taking the assessment, part C, which is 4.3 million, minus the revenue of 3.4 million. The difference is 890,000. So we think sometimes that, oh my goodness, we're sending kids out, yes, but we are still having revenue stay here, either by, of course, having kids coming to Taunton Public Schools for school choice, or for those students that are leaving, but that we do retain some of the Chapter 70 foundation budget.
So one of the biggest questions we always ask is why, why families come here and why do families choose school choice in other districts? So families, we, we talked to a lot of our school choice parents. Some parents that do enroll in the school choice program, we don't even see or know because they do it right at kindergarten, so we wouldn't even have their names, they've never been Taunton Public Schools students. So when we discuss with parents, these are some of the reasons why they do, why they choose Taunton. So a lot of it's work-related, some of it's because they, they themselves were Taunton Public Schools students, and now they might live in a neighboring town, so they want their student to, their child to have the same experiences. We also talk a lot about our athletics, so there is, we are so competitive, and there are plenty of our athletes that have decided to do, enroll in school choice program in order to come play a little more competitively. One of the things that I want to bring up before we hit this slide is that, so there's one particular community that neighbors us that seems to receive many of our students when it comes to the school choice program. So we don't necessarily have those names available to us, the children that attend. So we did a little digging, and I was able to go into some of the students and compare them to where they left us, or have we ever seen them? So what I found was many of the students that leave us to that particular community are leaving us before they've even stepped foot into Taunton Public Schools. So they're leaving at the elementary level, they're starting kindergarten there. So these are students that we have never had the opportunity to meet, these are students and families that we have never had the opportunity to speak to. And then it seems that once they're in, they stay in until we get closer to the high school. So there are families out there that choose to not send their child to an urban high school, and they look at other choices around their neighboring towns, and that's, that's where the other bulk goes. So looking at that particular community, it does seem that we have some work to do, because we've always concentrated on how, how we can market, especially our high school, because it offers so much, and I know Isaiah would be the first person to say that, but we haven't really thought a lot about what about the students that we have never even had an opportunity to meet? had an opportunity to meet, or the families? And of course, this becomes generational. If I have two, and I've chosen to send one outside of Taunton, then more than likely I'm going to send the second child out of Taunton. So that is something that was enlightening, I think, for me, and, and even for some people I spoke to about that today. So moving forward, that is definitely work that we're going to need to do. It's not just reaching out to those families and students that are within our community already enrolled in TPS, but how do you engage the families that don't know us and have not been enrolled in TPS to, to start with us and stay with us? Um, a couple of things I'm really proud of. So this doesn't differ a lot from last year, and I'll be the first one to admit that, and the reason for that is because this work is ongoing. I will say that last year, our middle schools started an opportunity with many clinics that were sports-related, and our high school students were running these clinics. So some of you might have gone to the middle school wrestling match over at Parker. The amount of kids that participated from the middle school was enormous, and they had all high school kid coaches coaching them to wrestle. We did the same thing with soccer. Basketball has always been kind of a staple, we've had basketball over time. We're looking to continue to enrich that, because our hope, obviously, starting last year, is that as we increase the opportunity for middle school opportunities to engage with our high schoolers, that they are going to want to go to high school. They have a person, right? They have, they, they have that sense of belonging, because they have met that older person in that particular sport that they can connect to, connect to. So I feel very proud in saying that our former athletic director did a wonderful job starting to build up, that up, and I have no doubt that Mr. Doughty will continue that tradition and, and already looking at other opportunities in sports. Uh, we have started to reach out to different communities, uh, community resources and agencies to do some community events within the city, just to make sure that people see Taunton Public School not only as, you know, the school system, but also a place where you belong, a place where your family wants to be. So those, uh, talks are happening now, and we're hoping, as the year goes on, that we'll have a calendar of events that we will be participating in to really welcome new families into Taunton Public Schools, so that they see us more than just a school district. And I think that might conclude our, yes, it concludes our presentation.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you both very much. I will, uh, open it up to the members if they have any questions or comments, Mr. Laura and then Mrs. Santos.
You say, uh, Mrs. Hoyd, about students that never come into our system, but parents who've had other children that go to another school system?
No, so I was trying to make the difference. So the reason, there's, there's two sides there that we talked about. One is why do, why do parents choose Taunton as a school district? So parents that might live in a community neighboring us, and they may like, I really want to join the school choice program in Taunton. Some of the reasons they do that, and our polling parents, some of them are because they, them too, were TPS students but now may not live in Taunton. So they are now applying for school choice so that their child can come. Um, so the other point that I was making was, when we looked at the numbers of, of kids that are leaving us in a particular school district that neighbors us, when we looked deeper, we found that there were many, many students whose parents and whose students, they live here, they're residents of Taunton. However, they have never given us the opportunity, they have automatically applied for school choice outside the district.
And so that requires more outreach from the school department here to try to bring them back to?
I think it means, i- in my eyes, I feel like that just means that we need to market ourselves more right from that elementary level. I think lots of times we concentrate on the older grades, particularly the high school. However, I think we need to start doing that work so much earlier. So we need to start, you know, up with our pre-K programs now, expanding. Um, Director Morninghan and I are working on a particular grant right now to continue to expand our pre-Ks, and then being able to really market that, those are the opportunities that we're going to need to pull these families in that may not know what our resus- resources are, and choose to go elsewhere, for whatever reason. So it's, it became very apparent to us as we dug deeper, that the concentration isn't just at the older level, but it's also at that pre-K level to let families know everything that we have to offer, so they're not choosing to do school choice beyond our town or city.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Santos?
That would be her.
I tried reading this a couple of times before I came in, it just like, uh, so I just wanted to just clarify, so we don't lose any money with school choice?
If you want to say it overall with school choice, I mean, there's, we always lose money when you send some kids. So we loo- if you're looking at the whole chapter seventy, right? Um, we are retaining some money, because part of the, the, um, sixteen thousand, whatever we are, the sixteen thousand-two-seventy-two for the foundation budget, we go ahead and get that amount per student, but then you minus that fifty-nine-hundred dollars per student, so that's about, you know, just under, it's just over eleven-thousand dollars, still stays in the district. And then the remaining around fifty-nine-hundred goes with the student to that sending district.
If I could, if I could, if I could just add to, um, the fifty-nine-hundred, that's the minimum that a Taunton will receive for school choice. It does fluctuate depending on if the child is a multilingual learner, if the child has an i- individual education plan, then it could be more than fifty-nine-hundred, because there are assessments that are added. The numbers that we used were the, um, num- this, the averages, the minimum that you're going to receive, it doesn't indicate, that fifty-nine-hundred dollars doesn't indicate the fluctuation that you'll see depending on the needs of the student.
But I, just so that two-point-five-million here and the one, three-point-one-million, those are, that's revenue for the district?
Correct.
Okay.
Absolutely.
In charter schools, we lose money, right?
We do lose money, but we're also making some money as well.
Because I just saw that the state then deducts the same amount from the sending district's state aid account, the sending district besides the school district, so that means that we lose some of the state.
Correct, because of the student choosing to, or the parents choosing to go to a charter school, yes.
Okay, all right. And so just the other thing, and, and you kind of spoke to this, is there any way to get information as far as why people, I know you say a lot of them start out right from the beginning, are, are those people completely anonymous to us, or is there a way to try to gather some data as to why people are choosing outside of Taunton?
So they are pretty anonymous, there is, so today, there's a way to dig through testing, it just takes a little time. Um, we don't have them in our student information system, they don't exist in our student information system, so these aren't families at all that we would have any contact information with. So it, it does, like, I could have a name, but I don't necessarily have any contact information, and the name I would have was a student name. So today, when I was, when, this week, when I was cross-referencing, I was basically taking a name, putting it into our student information system to see, have you, do they pop up, have they ever been registered with us? So those, I could find the trends that way, and there was, like I said, a, a, a large number of students that had never even been registered with us.
And the last thing I just wanted to say, um, with the, you know, trying to sell Taunton High School, uh, this is really first for me, it's just kind of a funny story, but most of my, my sibling, my older siblings, my older cousins, they all went to Coyle, and I was supposed to go to that test, and I skipped the test because I didn't want to go to Coyle, and I went to Taunton High. I was the only one out of most of my family that went to Taunton High, mostly the only one that got two college degrees. None of them did. So I was thinking, I'm like, can we look at success rates of Taunton High School students as well, too, like maybe graduation rates, college completion rates, and then that's something that could u- be used to sell the school as well, too?
We can absolutely do that, because all that data we have, so that's a great suggestion.
Yeah.
Okay, you're welcome, Dr. DeMello.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so, celebrating my seventh year as a school committee member, there are two things that I have most fearful of. One is net school spending, which I've overcome, the inverted triangle, Dr. Crowder, rest his soul, so I've overcome that, but school choice presentation is the second greatest fear. The reason is, if you can go to slide three, please. So from FY twenty-one to FY twenty-four, the gap from one-twelve to one-sixty-two seems to be an issue or a problem, okay? So we're sending more students out than we're taking in, so FY twenty-one, one-twelve, then one-twenty-one, then one-twenty-seven, the la- last one, FY twenty-four is one-sixty-two. So for me, if I don't understand the financial piece, it says, well, that's a big problem. But if you ti- now go to page eight, please. It seems like we're making three-point-one-million dollars, and we're not educating a hundred-and-sixty-three students. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Leaving students are two-hundred-and-sixty-eight are leaving.
Right, but we're getting paid the full assessment for the district, which is sixteen and change, and you're missing, uh, after that sixteen seven, two-seventy-two, the, the summation is four-million-three-hundred-sixty-thousand-eight-ninety-six, then take away the one-point-nine, that's how you end up with the two-point-five. So there's a little piece missing there, no big deal. What I'm saying is, then you go to the next line, you got the two-point-five-million, plus the six-nineteen, which is the one-hundred-and-five incoming students at fifty-nine-hundred, we're making three-point-one-million dollars, but we're not educating, we don't need resources to educate a hundred-and-sixty-three students. I mean, we don't need classrooms, we don't need teachers. I think we want to send more students out than we want to have in the classroom, is that correct? No? What am I reading wrong?
For every student, for every student who leaves Taunton Public Schools, we're losing fifty-nine-hundred plus, instead of getting the full sixteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars. So for every student who stays with us, we get the full assessment of sixteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-two. So what, what the, what the state takes into account is that we still have to hire teachers, we still have buildings that we need to heat, uh, buildings that we need to make sure we have staff, we have transportation costs, so the, the state takes into account that that child resides in this community, and the parent is making a choice to send their student elsewhere. So because it's just the, the portion of educating the student, right, the rest of the fees that go along with educating a child stay in the district that they're from.
Okay. Uh, again, I'm going to excuse myself, because I, I, I'm, I'm very confused once again, and this happens every year, you can check the tapes when we do the school choice. Based on the example on page eight, okay, the way I'm reading it, on the financial piece, right, we're making three-point-one-million dollars, but we're only providing resources in a classroom, bus transportation for a hundred and th- uh, we, we, we don't, we're not providing school space, teachers, bus transportation for a hundred-and-thirty-three students, but we're still making three-point-one-million dollars.
Because it minimizes the impact versus losing, so, I mean, I, I, excuse me, a- all I'm trying to say is, it doesn't make any sense, because if we would send more students out, we're actually making money, because we don't need classrooms and teachers. But if we sent those students out, and the sixteen thousand followed those students?
Well, they're not, because we're keeping eleven thousand.
But if it did, so what the state has taken into account, that if we lost a hundred-and-seven students, or two-hundred-and-sixty-eight students, times sixteen thousand, that would be detrimental to our school system. So the state takes into account, again, the state takes into account the portion just to provide the education, because if not, then school systems, we, we would be decimated. And you would see a lot of these smaller communities that surround us who want to get sixty dollars a kid, sixty dollars a student, if their chapter seventy increases, you would see a heavy competition from these surrounding communities to really target communities like Taunton, to re- to extract more students, because they would be getting sixteen thousand per student. It's very similar, think of it in terms of, um, like, of, of, of vocational school. A vocational school that receives Taunton students, when we lose that Taunton student, that vocational school is getting the full Taunton assessment plus an additional five-thousand dollars. And we don't, we do not receive or recoup any portion of that chapter seventy dollars, even though they live in our community. So this is the state's way of minimizing the impact.
But in the example, just to conclude, okay, in the example on page eight, that's right there, on the FY twenty-four numbers that were presented, one-oh-five coming in, two-sixty-eight going out, did we, or did we not make three-point-one-million dollars?
When you leverage?
This is a yes or no answer, Superintendent, no?
But you need, context matters.
Okay.
Context matters. So when you com- we retained two-point-five-million in chapter seventy.
Yep.
We retained two-point-five-million in chapter seventy. Because Taunton votes every year to be part of the school choice program, we made six-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand. So we retained two-point-five, and we made six-hundred-and-nineteen.
Right.
When you combine those two numbers together, it minimizes the impact of losing one-point-nine-million dollars, and then when you factor in the charter piece, which, again, for years, we've heard concerns that we have four-point-three-million dollars leaving the community, when in essence, it's really eight-hundred-and-ninety-thousand. So I think there's something to be said about the fact that we've been aggressive with school choice, we're putting systems in place, Taunton Virtual, pre-K, to try to retain more families, to minimize the impact of loo- of losing students. So instead of saying we have four-point-three, or four-point-four-million dollars leaving the community, because of the work we've done with retaining the chapter seventy, the incoming choice, and the charter reimbursement, now that's almost three-and-a-half-million dollars, so we're, it's a, it's a net loss of a million dollars, which is, again, I don't want to lose a million dollars, but it sure beats losing four-point-four-million dollars.
But we're not losing four-point-four-million.
We would be if we didn't have these programs in place.
Oh, understood.
Right. No, I mean, I, I just, doesn't make any sense, doesn't make any sense how we could actually be making money sending students out of district, and I'm glad we are, uh, I guess that's it.
I wouldn't say we're, I wouldn't say we're making money, I, I would just, that's, that's not correct, we're not making money, we're minimizing the impact of losing all those students, if we did not retain some of that chap- seven, that chapter seventy funding. And I think it's important for the community to understand, even though we're losing students, we're still retaining about two-thirds of that chapter seventy tuition.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. DeMello. Mrs. Schaffs.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentations, first time I've seen it in this format, so I enjoyed the numbers in, in my. Yes, and I liked the color code. So two things, so one, is there a cap on how many students we will take?
So that's just based on our enrollment, so that differs year to year. So when a school choice application comes in, the first thing I need to look at is the enrollment in the actual grade level that they're requesting. If there's room in that grade level, then we automatically accept the school choice application. So depending year to year, what our enrollment looks like in those particular grades that are being requested, would, um, would, would base, a- in the school, thank you, Brenda, would make the decision for me whether I'm approving it or not.
One of the things that, that was brought up with Melissa, and you've brought up about is, um, the high school and how much, um, we, um, marketed the high school. And I do think that what you said is important, that I think we need to give that same attention to marketing the preschool, because if we look at the eighth graders when they came over to the high school, um, we had a drop in, um, students leaving in ninth grade, because once they got acclimated to the school, and they got their friends, and they got into activities, when it came time for ninth grade, we didn't see them necessarily leaving and going to other schools that were going nine to twelve. So I would think maybe similarly, if we could market to really get those preschool kids in, that they probably would have a sense of community, and the parents wouldn't then leave. And if we've got a lot of, a lot of families that we're not even seeing, um, I think we have to really look at how we're remarketing the preschool, you know, especially in the coming years, to come up to try to mitigate some of that.
And we would agree, that's part of the work that we have, so, um, Director Amy Morninghan and I have been working diligently on a particular grant with the state to increase the pre-K classrooms within our district. So there'll be a lot more, you'll hear about that, and there'll be a lot more work around that as we pursue the grant.
I think that's a great idea.
And just, just this morning, I had a meeting with Secretary of Education Patrick Tuttweiler, and that was one of the topics that we discussed, and if, and when we can expect the chapter seventy formula to fully capture, you know, the full tuition that we would receive for our four-year-olds in the four-day program. So again, some of the chapter seventy-four programs, this is an investment forward, anticipating that by maybe two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven, they, you will see universal pre-K for four-year-olds.
Okay, if everybody's all set, we thank you very much for the presentation. Okay, next we have the superintendent's report, Superintendent Cabral.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm very proud and honored to introduce our new Director of Human Resources, Shannon Turner. Shannon brings a wealth of experience in both human resource management and educational leadership to our district. For over a decade, Shannon has been instrumental, has played an instrumental part in the educational community, most recently serving as the Assistant Principal of Plymouth North High School. So you have my report, but I think it'd be more advantageous of us if we had an opportunity to hear from Shannon herself, who's with us. So Shannon, again, um, just in the, the, the little over a week and a half that I've worked with Shannon, uh, I've noticed, uh, I've noticed a level of professionalism and seriousness that she has brought to the, to the office, and she, like me, she agrees that twenty-one vacancies is way too many, and she's working very hard to minimize that number, but I'll let her talk about her work and her vision for the office.
Thank you, Superintendent Cabral.
Thank you, Superintendent Cabral. I'm happy to have this opportunity to introduce myself to all of you tonight, and I look forward to working with each of you in this new role. Being born and raised in Taunton, I can say with great certainty just how special Taunton is to me, because Taunton is home. My deep connection to this community fuels my enthusiasm and my commitment to making a positive impact. I'm excited to bring my passion and experience to this role and to collaborate with each of you as we work together with shared goals. Together, I believe we can achieve great things and continue to make Taunton a wonderful place for everyone. Part of my initial efforts in this role, I have already begun meeting with building leaders to explore how our HR department can best support their needs for the upcoming school year. My extensive background in school leadership provides me with valuable insights into the day-to-day challenges that our schools face, allowing me to better understand and address how HR can assist. I'm eager to leverage this experience to strengthen our collaboration and ensure that our HR services effectively and efficiently support the success of both our staff and our students. In addition, in the coming days, I will be emailing each of you, because I would like to schedule a time that works with your calendar, um, to hear areas of feedback, feedback of areas that we can enhance our overall effectiveness, see what's been working well and where we can improve. We are really committed to attracting the best and most qualified staff for our district and getting those vacancies filled. Um, we have recently expanded our job postings onto social media platforms. So if you see those in the coming days, please share them on your own pages so that we can reach an even broader audience. Um, and then additionally, the HR department has currently undergoing cross-training um, to foster positive growth and further improve our efficiency. I am also dedicating time to learning and refining the systems that we use in the office to identify opportunities for improvement. And like Superintendent Cabral said, I think I've had a positive and exciting first week and a half here. Um, but I'm eager to continue to support each of you and the district in any way I can. So please never hesitate to reach out to me if I can help in any way. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. We are thrilled to have you on Taunton Public School team.
No, if, if I may, Mayor, the, the only comment I had, uh, I mean, I've been pretty vocal about HR in the last term that I've been here. I think it's the backbone of, of the, uh, the company, the school district, whatever it may be. Uh, I'm, I'm happy that you're bringing in new, fresh perspective. And of course, I want you to succeed. By succeeding, you need to surround yourself with people that can support you, technology that can support you, and we as a school committee will support you a hundred and ten percent. So please don't be afraid to ask through the superintendent, or through, she reports to you, right Superintendent? Through the superintendent, whatever your needs may be, and I'm sure the school committee will definitely support you. So thank you for being here.
Thank you, Dr. DeMello. I appreciate that. Thank you, school committee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon.
So speaking of attracting the best and the brightest and most talented to our school system, I am very pleased to announce that we have a newly appointed principal at the Bennett Elementary School, Amanda Earmar. Amanda is no stranger to the Taunton Public Schools. She has served as the Assistant Principal for three years at the East Ton Elementary School. So again, I don't think I would do her justice if I read my superintendent's report, so I think the committee would benefit from hearing from Amanda. So Amanda, congratulations on your first appointment as principal of the Bennett Elementary School.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Superintendent Cabral, and thank you, school committee, for having me here. Um, I'm very excited to begin this new chapter in Taunton Public Schools. This is my fifteenth year. Um, so believe it or not, I graduated college and I landed a position as a speech therapist in a preschool at Barnum. Um, so it was a great experience to be in a program where that building then closed and we moved on to Letty. Um, and I was able to continue growing in this district and became a special educator. And then under great leadership, I knew that I wanted to pursue something further. And I went in for my administration license and I served as an assistant principal for the past three years at East Ton Elementary School. Um, so I'm very fortunate for this opportunity to be part of the Bennett community. Um, I'm excited to work with the staff, the families, the students, to make Bennett the best school that it can be. I look forward to bringing fresh perspectives, um, and just being their cheerleader and their servant leader of what do I need to do to get them to where they need to be? What do my students need? What do my families need? And what does my staff need? Um, so again, I look forward to the new school year and being in this position, and thank you for this opportunity as well. If you have any questions.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Amanda. And last but not least, I'm very proud to announce that Assistant Principal Carolyn Blino was awarded, or has been awarded, a very prestigious fellowship. So Taunton High School Assistant Principal for Teaching and Learning, Carolyn Blino, has been awarded the prestigious Transformative Leaders of Massachusetts Fellowship by Spring Point Education. As part of her second year, second ever cohort of this two-year program, Carolyn joined a select group of secondary school assistant principals and teachers. This esteemed fellowship, establishing collaboration with the Ba Foundation in the summer of two thousand twenty-two, aims to promote equity and transformation in school leadership across Massachusetts. This recognition highlights Carolyn's dedication and underscores the broader impact this program will have on our education system. The fellowship is a rigorous leadership program designed to prepare emerging leaders to rethink high school education. During this program, Carolyn will gain essential skills, positioning her as a creative leader and a catalyst for change within our school and the broader community. The fellowship emphasizes instructional and student-centered leadership, offering a tailored approach to each fellow to craft their own leadership path. In the first year, Carolyn will take on additional leadership responsibilities, supported by monthly programming and mentorship. The second year will expand these responsibilities with personalized coaching to deepen and sustain essential leadership skills. After the fellowship, Carolyn will continue to benefit from an alumni network with potential opportunities for extended coaching for those interested in designing or leading schools. This fellowship aligns seamlessly with Carolyn's current work with the Ba Foundation on reimagining the high school experience for Taunton High School. As a catalyst for the Ba Foundation Meaning the Moment cohort, Carolyn is well-positioned to leverage the skills and the knowledge gained from the fellowship to further her impact on the high school education and community. I am incredibly proud of Carolyn's achievement and look forward to the positive influence her participation in the fellowship will have on our school community. This accomplishment not only recognizes her dedication and expertise, but it also brings valuable resources and insights to the Taunton Public Schools, further enhancing our efforts to provide an equitable and, and transformative educational experience. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent. Next, we have administrative business. There's a staffing report and Taunton Public School's staffing update, both of which I believe are informational unless you want to speak to them, Superintendent?
Unless there are any questions. Um, you'll notice I'm getting back on, uh, track. We're providing you the, a listing by school and by position of what current vacancies exist. So you, you can expect to have that on a regular basis each month.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to subcommittee reports, finance and law, eight, uh, from this evening, eight, seven twenty-four. Dr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Finance and Law Subcommittee met. Present were Donna Shavz and myself. First item on the agenda was disposable, disposal of surplus equipment. It was a school shed that has an estimated value of a hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, the, uh, vote was unanimous to put it onto the surplus list to see if there's any buyers. If not, then dispose of it. So that was approved unanimously. And the second item was bills payable for FY twenty-five, the amount of five hundred fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents. Uh, Mrs. Shavz and myself had various questions concerning the, the warrant, uh, just informational only. Uh, and, uh, that was also voted unanimously to approve the FY twenty-five in the amount of five fifty-nine, nine thirty-nine, point sixty-six. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept?
Motion to accept the report.
Second. Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Uh, next we have new business use of facilities process review. Superintendent, is there any business with that?
Uh, this was an item that I believe was brought up at the last meeting, um, to be discussed. Uh, my recommendation would be that a motion would be in order to refer this item to the Rules Subcommittee. But obviously, it's on the agenda. If there's any discussion, this would be the appropriate time for discussion.
Dr. DeMello?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I'd like to expand upon that. So, uh, there were some recent events in the city that triggered some phone calls to a couple of school committee members regarding, uh, the use of our facilities. Uh, there was a lot of miscommunication. I, I guess what we're trying to achieve here is a process to evaluate and better understand, uh, events of greater magnitude that affect our school buildings, our school properties. And I, I think it was, uh, I, I think we all, last time we met, uh, uh, better understood that this should go to a Rules Subcommittee to kind of develop a policy regarding, uh, different parameters. You know, is it inside, outside, the magnitude, uh, if there's city, uh, folks involved, the police and fire and so forth. I think the, you know, it's something that should be released, we should have a policy going forward. So what the superintendent has mentioned, a motion would be in order, Mayor. Thank you.
So a motion to send it to Rules Committee, is that what you said?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Uh, unfinished business is action item up to, oh. Oh, I apologize. I only see the use of facilities.
Just, uh, the, the curriculum Subcommittee will be planning a meeting before the beginning of the school year. So I just wanted to make note of that.
Okay, thank you.
And the same thing with the special programs. We're going to look at the update of, um, the district website with getting all of the special programs up onto the website. So we're looking to see where we are with that also.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, unfinished business would be action item update. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I do have an unfinished business item.
Uh, we will go back to unfinished, uh, okay, yeah, we're starting.
So, uh, basically, in honor of National Health Center Week, we'd like to recognize the incredible work that Manette Community Health and other community health centers across our community are doing. Uh, I would particularly like to shine a spotlight on how impactful Manette at Taunton Public Schools, our school-based health center, has been to our students by bringing medical and behavioral healthcare directly to students in their school setting. We have removed significant barriers to access. Manette at Taunton Public Schools ensures that our students receive the care they need without missing valuable classroom time. Today, we as a school committee show our appreciation for Manette Healthcare and our community health centers. Together, we can build a healthier, more equitable future for all our students. Thank you, Mayor.
And if I could just add, for anyone watching at home, I'm proud to state that this week, being National Health Center Week, Manette actually opened their doors on Monday. So they are open, I believe, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday from eight to fi, eight AM to five PM for anyone needing medical attention, student athletes who need a medical physical, Manette is open. Please take advantage of this wonderful opportunity.
Thank you, Superintendent Cabral. Okay, there is no press here this evening, so I will take a motion.
Motion to-
Second. Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.